I'm gonna start.
Yep.
So.
Hello, I'd like to call to order tonight's school committee meeting for Tuesday, November 5th, 2019. May I have an approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments from the public tonight? Okay, we'll move on to presentations and discussions. Nantucket High School National Merit Scholars, Dr. John Buckey.
Pleased to be able to make this presentation. I don't get to do it every year, which makes it more enjoyable. A year ago, October 2018, 1.5 million students sat for the PSAT and SQT, the National Merit Scholarship Test, and from there, they picked 50,000 students that they had received a high enough score. From there, they named commended students, and we are fortunate enough to have three Nantucket High School students that were named as commended students through the National Merit Scholar Program. And apparently, this year, your last name needs to begin with D, because all these students are on Ms. Julia Chumak's caseload, so I want to recognize Ms. Chumak for being here to support her students this evening.
Thank you.
And so I will call them up and give them their certificate, and I have prepped them, and might have questions for them for what next year or beyond might hold for them. So at this time, I'd like to invite Anjali Dar, Victoria Dixon, and Anita Duggan to come down and receive their National Merit Scholarship commended certificate. Does the school committee have any questions for the students, or just offer their congratulations?
Congratulations, of course. You should be very proud of yourself to be among the commended ones. Victoria, I've known for quite some time. What are your plans? I'm curious to know, what do you plan to do when you graduate?
Go ahead.
College, probably something science-related, not really sure yet.
Okay.
We'll see.
Awesome.
So I'm currently, I change my mind like every week. But I'm currently interested in business, perhaps with kind of like a global sustainable development kind of focus.
Awesome.
Some weeks I'm thinking, oh, artists, and other weeks I'm thinking something like food.
I'm definitely majoring in chemistry, not entirely sure where that's going to lead me, but college this year.
Well, good luck. Good luck, and I'm sure you'll be successful at whatever you decide.
Congratulations, we're very proud of you.
I was never commended, so.
Congratulations. Any other questions or comments? No.
What she said. Wonderful.
Thank you. We are. Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Buckey. All right, our mass award to senior. Mr. Kuzor.
So every year, the superintendent of schools is given an award to give out to a student that he deems worthy and that meet certain criteria. The criteria are a three-year cumulative average, their rank in class, a personal selection by the superintendent, which always makes it enjoyable. And the superintendent has leeway within the top 5% of the class for that personal selection. And you are, each school district is awarded certificates based on the number of students in the school, and we are given one, much to my chagrin. It's, we have so many students who are worthy of being honored. This doesn't come with a cash prize, but it is a significant honor, I think, and something that a student can put on their resume as they apply to colleges and in the future. And so I've had the benefit of watching our kids grow and progress over 10 years. Some maybe I've only watched six or seven years, but many of them I've seen for a number of years. And this was probably the most difficult year to choose, and that doesn't take anything away from the person who I selected, it's just points to this class. This senior class is a special group. It's one of those classes that you get every 10 years or so. And so I am delighted tonight to present this award to Anjali Grace Dar. Anjali, would you come back up?
And again, we're very proud of you. Watched you for many years, and I know that you are going to be a success in whatever you do. So thank you for letting us watch you.
Congratulations, Anjali.
Thank you.
She said two words.
That's so exciting. All right, well, moving on to our community school update. I'm gonna say happy birthday, by the way.
Thank you.
To our presenter.
I know a place I would rather be.
Tracy.
You want us to?
Let's move down so we can see the screen. I'm not blocking the screen for the audience.
Yeah, I'm just turning too. Well. I think so.
Yeah, I'm much more nervous now. Thank you. So I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to share this presentation. It's the first of this kind for the community school, at least in my time. We typically present numbers, and this presentation is not numbers. It is titled "Beyond the Numbers." As much as numbers very much matter to us, the community school wanted to share with you tonight our impact. So that's what my focus will be tonight. The mission of the Nantucket Community School is to engage, strengthen, and connect our community. We provide a diverse level of high-quality, affordable programs, encourage lifelong personal growth, and reach out to all members of the community spanning every age and stage. Nantucket Community School is comprised of myself and 16 other full-time employees. We are represented in the blue, I'm actually in orange, and the yellow boxes are our part-time staff. So the blue staff are a big chunk of what is happening at the community school, and we budget for benefits for these 17 employees. It is just over half of our town appropriation. And our part-time staff, who do not qualify for benefits, typically range between 100 and 200 employees over the course of the year. So there's a lot. We are very close with the HR department, as you can imagine. Our early childhood programs, oh no, I'm missing some photos. Our early childhood programs are overseen by Pauline Cronin, and the early childhood department is very near and dear to my heart. It's where I started in 2014 at the community school, and under Pauline's leadership, actually. And we see that in this department, we're setting kids up for success by working not just with the children alone, but with their families. So we try to engage the whole family and work to build a trusting relationship with them. An example of this is a family that we were working with. They were in one of our playgroups, and we saw that they were struggling. We made some connections for them and connected them with Fair Winds, connected them with a safe place, and we've continued to have a relationship with their family. Their daughter is now in second grade, and we continue to see them and work with them alongside the school counseling department and the elementary school. So a lot of outside support and support within the public school system. Gaining the trust of families is important. We are seeing families in those playgroups, connecting them with resources. ASQs are a tool that we use in our playgroups to help teach parents really the developmental milestones of children when they might not be as informed about those milestones early on in their child's development. We have trained coordinators and playgroup facilitators that are helping facilitate those ASQs with parents, and we would not be where we are in our early childhood department without our community partners. Thank you to Margrethe from the Community Foundation for supporting us, and Remain, Nantucket Educated Trust, the Harvey Foundation, and the Nantucket Cottage Hospital. Their support helps us to build these viable programs that we hope that the public school or other entities will see as beneficial, and then one day eventually own them. I'm sorry, I'm gonna pause. Something is going on, and I don't want you to miss out on the photos. I'm very sorry, but the images are not showing up. Jen, would you be able to help me? No. I'm so sorry. I'm gonna hop right on my account really quickly because I just don't want to miss not having the photos for you. I'm not sure. I'll just be real quick. I'm so sorry. Thank you for your patience. Oh, we'll try again. Thanks. Sorry about that. The communi- Sorry. I'll continue talking while Jen's working out. The community school facilitates enrichment and recreation between the months of September and June. Typically, we would talk about the summer months. So during our school year, you know Kelly Corbett's Dance Works program. I think some of you have attended the performances, you've had children in them, and she's developing a thriving program. And we actually were piloting Irish step dance classes under our children's enrichment umbrella, and that was going so well that Kelly was able to bring that into her Dance Works program and her curriculum. So she's looking to grow and add different dance components within her program as well, and it's been a huge success. She really works hard to do it all. Now we're not moving. Sorry. She's not just growing dancers, she's growing people. And so this is seen by the engagement that she fosters and the connection that she continues to grow with her dancers, who typically come in around the age of three and a half, and oftentimes are working with her all the way through their graduation in 12th grade. She also has a thriving apprenticeship program, and this year, there are 16 apprentices that she has under her watch in Dance Works. And they, these dancers have really become role models for the younger children that are in the Dance Works program. This model carries over into some of our other departments as well. This is a representation of what's happening at the pool during the school year. So we are running public school access to the pool through the PE department for grades three through 12 during the school day in conjunction with community access. And there are benefits and challenges to doing both, and so I just wanted to outline that for everybody. Despite challenges, there are great successes happening at the pool. If you can see from this visual, there are days where we don't have school, for example, a day like today, where we would have more adult access, like this, this date here. This is last year. But what we find is it becomes challenging to support athletes and swimmers with consistent access when there are varying schedules within the different schools. And it's been a challenge as well as the enrollment grows, class sizes grow, the number of PE teachers grows, and so it can be a strain on the pool. But there are great benefits to having the community school staff as part of that program during the school day. There are lots of connections made for students. So Jim having his eye on the PE classes allows him to gauge students who might have more interest in swimming, students who we could refer to a scholarship for a Learn to Swim class, for example, or possibly suggest that they join the swim team. We've been able to look deeper at the schedule and try to gain more access for swimmers on the swim team. They've gone from having 12 hours in the water to something almost doubling that with creative scheduling and dry land workout. So it's been quite impressive. And the apprenticeship model is working within the pool as well. So the students on the swim team who maybe started swimming at age three and a half in the Learn to Swim class grow to join the club swim team and are now teaching Learn to Swim, or they're coaching the swim team. So that model is really unique and special to the community school. Another program that's thriving at the pool is the Adult Learn to Swim, and this program is made up of volunteers. It's four years old, and we've had some of the same volunteers from the beginning. And one powerful story that I experienced, I was on the pool deck one day during Learn to Swim, because my girls were getting ready to get in the water, and we were doing the handoff, and two moms came on the pool deck and said that they wanted to sign up for adult Learn to Swim lessons, Learn to Swim class, that they were very nervous about the water and very apprehensive, and they didn't want to translate that over to their children, so that they were willing to take that risk and sign up and be brave. And they did, and they had an amazing experience. But it's that, that powerful connection and that bravery, and the hope would be that we would be able to get more volunteers who maybe are bilingual that would be able to allow them that comfort when they're in the water. But there's some amazing work that's happening at the pool. So our enrichment program ebbs and flows. It's hard to always find the thing that's going to work for children and what will stick. Some challenges that we've seen the last couple of years is decreasing enrollment and really finding that thing that works. What we do know is that families are looking for childcare. So some of the enrichment programs that are more popular are the programs that are happening on the half-day or the full day from, released from school. So we're working with our community partners as that, those programs are a little bit hard to staff. And so working with Sustainable, for example, is a really nice partnership to be able to offer that childcare piece to families who are in need. Gymnastics is doing very well, and our enrollment is increasing. Where we find that it's difficult as well as the children age and the equipment is not as advanced as the gymnasts, it's difficult. We set the equipment up Saturday morning and break it down Saturday afternoon. So it's great for pre-K, it's great for the lower elementary, and then it becomes a bit of a challenge. It's not like Dance Works or the pool where they have a designated location where they can live and have their equipment. Dreams within children's enrichment would be able, we would be able to bring more of these partnerships into more of the childcare pieces that we have within our day, and I'm gonna talk about that in a moment. Extended Day, this program, as many of you know, has been around for a long time. I think it used to be called EduCare, and it's gone through different transformations. It is a very necessary program for those kindergarteners who are not old enough to go to the club yet. So we are also working with this apprenticeship model in our Extended Day program. This photo is three high school students who actually were Extended Day students when they were younger, so they've returned. We also see that in our camp. Some of them are working in our camp program, and so we're trying to grow them year-round and make sure that they're supported and we're connecting with them regularly. It also allows us to make referrals to programs like the LaSalle program if there are students who are looking to get into education and to make those connections for them and foster that in our care. Some challenges in Extended Day are the staffing. When we're working with high school students, it's amazing to be able to grow them, but we also need adults who are there to supervise these kindergarteners. So that's something that we work to strive to fill that gap. TAs work very well, and a lot of times, TAs are the employees that are looking for that, for money, for more jobs. We're stuck to five hours a week with TAs because of their contracts. So it's not as consistent as we would like for the students, and I think probably for the TAs, but we make it work the best we can. And as I was talking about the enrichment piece, I think where we are at the community school right now is our dream would be to find some out-of-school time funds to be able to bring the children's enrichment that we're struggling with into our Extended Day so that our community partners were working with our Extended Day students after school. Teen enrichment is also an enrichment department that ebbs and flows. Teens are a hard, as many of you know, a hard population to target. Some of them are very busy, some of them, they struggle to commit to, you know, find what their interest is. But Blair had a great year last year, finding two programs, intermural basketball and the bike club, that were very successful. And with intermural basketball, it was a great collaboration between the public school and the community school as we were responding to a need that the public school had. And we reached out after the programming end, and we were able to get some feedback from families, so allowing a window of time after basketball, or excuse me, after school, but before basketball, so students could get their homework done and then go to play their sport, was something that we were, you know, we really love the conversations and being able to meet kids and families where they are and work with the school. So that's been exciting for us.
Can I just interrupt you for a quick moment? I'm sorry. If there's anyone here that has a spray foam insulation pickup truck outside, your lights are on.
Drivers Ed has been a great success for us as well. It was something that when I started at the community school, Drivers Ed was under a position that was teen enrichment and rec and a few other things. And so we saw the need for a full-time employee under Drivers Ed. Part of the reason for that is because the instructors for Drivers Ed are also teachers in the school. And so when they have vacation time, they want to take their vacation time, and when they are teaching, it left more time for driving to happen. And so having Dan start with us last year has been a game changer, and we were able to offer some Drivers Ed during school vacation weeks and during summer vacation in between when students finish their jobs and when they started school. So just to be a bit more flexible with our schedule. Dan also speaks a little bit of Spanish, and it's kind of gotten out there. There's been a lot of adults who have been doing driving hours with him during the day. And so that, when you think about the pool and you think about driving and the seriousness of those two tasks, it's really nice to be able to meet people and connect with the same language. And so that's something that we're hoping to be able to hire a bilingual instructor someday and possibly acquire a second vehicle. Our adult ed department is kind of finding its, finding its way and finding things that really work for the community and what the needs are. So this slide just shows an array of programs that we have offered for adults, and they don't always run. Sometimes we'll roll them out again, or we'll revisit another year. Sometimes we have to discontinue them, though, due to lack of interest. But some really take off. Surf Safe has been really popular, and it's just trying to find a way to network within the community and get the pockets of people who might need to access that content and make sure they know that it's there. This shows some information. I know we were staying away from numbers, but this number is really powerful, and it also speaks to our partnership with Remain and the support that they've provided for us. We have been running GED and ESOL through a grant supported by Remain, and originally, the program was for GED prep in English only. So students would come, hopefully having the content, and they would take the test, or they would prepare to take the test and then take the test in English. We heard through our bilingual support and through our translator that there was really a need for this in Spanish. And so we did a little bit of research, and through funding, we were able to acquire a GED program that has two layers. One would be prep, and one would actually be content and then testing. And it's offered in English and Spanish. So the increase from nine to 25 is predominantly Spanish speakers who are now coming to take their GED. So it's pretty powerful. I'm gonna quickly pass through these slides. It's really just content on what this looks like and how students can acquire it and what the program looks like, full course and short course. But it's really amazing. We had planned to offer this class at 56 Center Street, which is our location in town. We have 14 computers there that were also purchased through supportive Remain and installed through the tech department here who has supported us. We just can't say thank you enough. We had to move to the high school because we had so many students. So it's nice that it's here. We hope to be able to move back to 56 eventually, but it's amazing to have so many students. And not to take away from our ESOL program, which is, continues to thrive, we're working to build our staff and our cohort of instructors who teach these four different levels of ESOL. They're a really amazing group. They've been quite responsive to the students this year, so we even discussed taking the leap to not necessarily call it ESOL, but building community through ESOL, because they're checking in with the students, what are your needs, you know, how can we help you? And so then they're teaching English through the content, like how to navigate transportation on Nantucket, and it's just really powerful stuff, and they're doing amazing work. This is a story about a dad who many of you might know through his restaurant, and he, we actually met him at the community school when his daughter, Megan, was in our Ready Set School program. And he was coming, just wearing his dad hat, and realized how many programs the community school had to offer, and then he went crazy. He was enrolling in numerous programs and really supporting himself and the community school. He, he was really surprised that he could access the things that he needed. Well, he really went there looking to support his daughter. So it's nice to have his support. He actually said about the journeyman class, when I was listening to his story, thinking that was so disjointed, you know, he said, "Well, I don't really want to wait for people to come help me in my restaurant, so I'll just learn this so I can do it myself." So it was really amazing. And I wanted to close with this visual. We talk about silos. I know you talk about them in the different schools within the public school, and we talk about them in the community school within our departments. And when I joined the community school in 2014, I often heard at team meetings, "We need to get out of our silos," you know, "we need to work together." And I feel that our team has worked really hard in the last year and a half to connect and to kind of really focus in on our mission and realize that we can't be everything to every- really focus in on our mission and realize that we can't be everything to everybody and that we really need to focus on engaging and strengthening and connecting. And I like this because families could um meet you in your building and be there for a few years. W- we also are seeing families at a very young age and they ebb and flow. We see them for a year. We don't see them for three years. We see them back at another point in time. And so it's, it's really nice to think about kind of like how many points of contact you have with a family. And we hope that we can just be there for them when, when they need that and help them redirect on, on their way. I think that's it. Do you have any questions?
You know I have some comments. Be surprised. Hopefully this will work. Um thank you, Tracy. This is a, I, this was exactly, I think, what we'd hoped to hear and, and the numbers are important, but I think the face of community school.
And you can have the numbers. We have them. We collect them at the end of every kind of semester. So the end of our fall, the end of our winter, and then at the end of summer, and we have them. So I can always share them with you.
I think this, this was, at least for me, was very impactful to see how you uh reach all, all areas. Um yeah, early relationships, the first point of entry, as you, as you mentioned, I think is very important and clearly shows here. Uh can you just tell me what you're doing with your preschool dollars? I know years ago you were getting a grant from the golf club that provided early education preschool dollars that really just came in and went straight out to early childhood. Have you been able to find other resources for that so that you could utilize a different grant from the golf club?
No, um right now, so just so that everybody understands, um the community school writes a community grant um to the golf course and um for a number of years, we've been granted money that um Susan Richards, our outreach coordinator, um distributes to families in need. So it's a childcare assistance grant. So it, it is awarded based on need and based on um childcare access. So families, it's not for enrichment. It is for families that are enrolled in full-time childcare and are having um in need of support. It goes to programs that are for-profit. So programs that are nonprofit cannot refer their families to access this money. The benefit for us is that Susan gets to connect with these families and we can do the resource and referral if they have other needs. Um and so that's why we love doing it. But to your point, um those dollars don't come to us. They're actually held at the community foundation and there's a partnership there where they're distributed to families directly. Um or excuse me, to providers to, to reimburse the funds that they're um not charging families. Um but it is a challenge because then we are, w- we are not applying for a grant for another type of program or need that we might have within the community school. That being said, nonprofits could write their own grant in a very similar way and apply for funds to access this support. So I think we as an organization might have to make a choice someday. Um if we were to continue to do this to support the community or if we were going to um kind of notify and say, you know, we have this need and we're going to a, apply for a different grant. You also then run the risk of not getting that grant funding, so.
Right. Do you uh get support for administrative um support for that work?
No.
I thought I knew the answer. I think the other um piece, when you're talking about programming is because you were a fee-based program. Because as you said earlier on, half of your town appropriation goes to health insurance. Correct? If I understood that correctly, which is I think something that we need to sort of look at that because you've clearly grown over the last ten years. And um to, to think that all of what you do, you have to make eighty percent of your budget up with fee-based programs. One of the struggles is to provide something that someone else isn't already offering, that they got funding from a grant so that they can offer it for free. Is that still the case for community school?
Can you say that again? That was a lot. It was a lot.
So in the past, I know offering enrichment programs for fee for cost became challenging because as other funds became available in the community, other organizations applied for grants so that they could provide similar programs for free.
Yes.
So therefore.
Yeah, we're very low cost. I mean, the number of nonprofits that are focused in specific areas where you look at the artist association, they're focused on art. So we are not going to offer art enrichment after school because that would be mission creep. And then you would have the, the music center who, where I think in the past the community school would offer music. We're not going to do that because that is under their mission. So if, it becomes challenging to find what is it that families want and, and how do we keep it affordable? And can we find a qualified instructor to teach that content? Because that's also what makes our programs thrive is if you have that person who has that passion and that talent for what you're looking for. So it, it is becoming challenging to keep the programs affordable and to, to find what we should be offering that families want.
Right. Agreed. Um thank you for explaining about the GED because I had that circled because when I looked at the PowerPoint, it was like, oh my gosh, how did those numbers grow so much?
Yeah, it's a good thing.
Um do you meet with guidance at the high school prior to a student making a decision to maybe drop out of school and pursue GED?
We are not involved in any like school day meetings about students. Um we did have a meeting with the school counseling department in, in the high school to talk about the GED program and that it was there if students reached a point where um the school counselor that was working closely with them felt that they might be then making that next step. Um but it's not presented to students as like, if you don't want to attend school, then you would get your GED. Because really we want, I mean, our goal, the school's goal is that they're graduating from high school. Um but the school counseling department is aware of the program and they can make a connection to us, but we're not attending meetings regularly or part of those conversations about students.
I just, I just wonder if, and I'm sure the guidance department is doing this, but if some students realize how difficult that path is taking a GED, that they may opt to try to, you know, stay in school so that they could take that path with all of the support because really with GED, unless you're getting the tutoring, it's a self-study.
Well, so the way that the, I mean, y- yes, um they should stay in school. The GED is challenging. It's very difficult. Um the way that the GED program is set up right now is there is an English um teacher and there's a bilingual support specialist. And so there is staffing there that are there to support. But they are not necessarily like teaching the content. They're facilitating the experience and they're motivating these students to continue in the process and saying, you know, look, I'll see you next week. I will, this is my expectation. But yeah, they, they should stay in school.
Right. Okay, thank you. Done.
That's not going to reach. Jim, any questions?
On the challenges of the community school supporting PE use of the pool, you say waning participation levels per grade level.
Yeah, I think there are at times students who are not participating. And so there's options in terms of what happens to their grade if they choose to not participate in that class.
A significant number?
I'd have to pull the numbers. I think the PE department would know from attendance and what they're awarding in grades because they get, I think, a fifty percent if they're not swimming. So. Um but it might be worth looking into it and seeing what the patterns are in the different grade levels um and their interests. We did, Jim and I did hold a meeting with the PE teachers in the spring. It was the first time that a meeting like that had taken place and it was really great to get that feedback and then met with the administration to kind of share the feedback of um, you know, what's, wh- what the trends are in um PE use of the pool and interest. And so it was really nice to kind of get that down on paper. And Mike might have something to say.
Yeah, I'm going to join the conversation because um it is a challenge for us now. This pil-, this pool was built for um a school district of maybe a thousand students. And we are now between sixteen hundred and seventeen hundred. So as those numbers have increased, you can imagine the number of students participating in third grade through twelfth grade swimming has increased. And it, that has had a result in reducing time for other groups. Um notably the seniors. So blocks that, that, you know, before might have been open have been closing because they're going to our students. So one of the conversations that has to take place is do we still offer the swim program for all NPS students in grades three through twelve? Or do we, do we narrow that and continue to offer learn to swim program for those students in those grades who don't know how to swim? Um so it, it's a, that, that's going to be a challenge for this district as we continue to grow. How do you um, how do you find more time in the um, in the pool for everybody who wants that time? And I, I know that Jim um and Tracy and, and Jim and his program have worked very hard to meet all of those needs, but it's, it's becoming harder. Um and we're going to have to um as a district face that at some point. And, and you can imagine too, you know, locker rooms um have, are a challenge. You know, should there be, instead of the small locker rooms that worked when the, when the pool was built, the small locker rooms for the, for adults, should there be an new locker rooms somehow connected for the adult population coming in and out? Um so it's, it's a very real challenge, I think, for this district in the next ten years to decide how to meet the, the needs of everybody. So didn't mean to.
It's okay. Thanks. Any questions, comments?
Comments for sure. I cannot adequately express in mere words my appreciation for what you're doing. It is what the community is all about and you're making it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. It's my team. I have very strong.
You in the plural.
Thank you. Joel?
Yeah, I'm going to piggyback right off of Mr. Sorevik. I wanted to thank you immensely for the opportunities you guys provide. Um I think at the time, kids don't really value how important these programs are and how useful they are. As a kid myself, I was in extended day. I took several kit cooking programs, swim lessons, and I think every kid at our school thinks it's normal to have swim lessons, third grade through high school. But I, I, I can't think of another high schooler in the nation really that would be able to value and use that opportunity. Looking back, I realize how grateful I am. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Um do you survey the community and our students to see what programs are interested in?
Yes.
Do you?
Yeah, um on a limited basis. Uh the, uh we find the more that we survey, the harder it is to get really great feedback. So we oftentimes when we will put out a new program, we'll ask for feedback about that program so that we can make it better the next time. Um and we actually did a survey last year in the middle school through Google email and um asked students what they'd be interested in. And that was how we targeted certain students when they had said that they would be interested in something. When we rolled it out, we made sure that we asked them specifically to join or consider signing up.
Yes, great. Thank you. And have you ever thought about asking students to help with translating for Drivers Ed? Maybe get some observing hours or volunteer hours?
Um so we have, we have a full-time interpreter on staff and so she's gone along um with Dan when he's covering um heavy vocabulary. And so she would go along for tha- that period of time to get that content out. He's actually doing pretty well with his Spanish and can make it through because it's re- rather conversational when they're in the car. Um I'm not sure we would go to the extent of having students do that work. Um it's something that we could think about um definitely.
Thank you. Well, another question. Do you offer a lifeguarding program at the pool for our students?
For students. So there's a, a, a lifeguarding program that's offered outside of school time. Um and I believe that it's something that could be considered as an elective. I'm not, I'm not sure if that's happening currently. Currently happening, yes.
It is currently happening?
He's nodding yes. Yes, yeah, through the high school. But then there's also a, a for fee um program that um the general public can sign up for or if students are not for some reason accessing that during the school day, they can do that as well.
Great. Well, thank you so much. Thank you for being here on your birthday. Wonderful presentation. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, the ESL update. Kelly?
I think everyone should have a staple.
Thanks.
No, I had two. I had two. Yeah, I know. Our tastes are similar. Big packs of them at the beginning of our school year.
You ready? Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kelly Cuny. I'm the English learner director and this is our yearly update. My presentation has a lot of numbers, but I'll try to tell you the story behind those numbers. Um this is um a list of the schools and our wonderful staff that support all of our English learners. We have stars next to um new people. Oh, Tina's moved. That, that was not up by her name. It's actually supposed to be near Lauren Gabriel. Tina has been with us for a long time. Um Lauren Gabriel's a new teacher we have at NIS. Um she's married to a Dominican. Her children are bilingual, so she's a huge asset to our, to our program. Um we also have Evelyn McEckern who um used to work in the special ed department and now she's our bilingual TA with our newcomers at the high school. So that's a huge asset for her to be able to work with math teacher um and other foundational class teachers to help um trans-language a lot of the content so that the students can get most out of, out of their learning. And we also have Melanie Mendez, who is a graduate of Nantucket Public Schools. She is um working for us as a bilingual support specialist. Oh, plus, most importantly maybe, all of our core content teachers. Our core content teachers are SEI endorsed and they're all part of the team. Because in Massachusetts, our system of delivery um to support um multi ling-, multi um legal learners is um SEI endorsed core content teachers and ESL teachers who are specialists. So they get a double dose every day. So really, all of our staff are really part of the um bilingual team. This is a quick video. I won't show you the whole thing, but um in our department, we start the fall, everyone does an assets of bilingualism unit. So hold on a minute. Um and it varies from kindergarten to twelfth grade. What they read, what the students read, and also what their summative projects are. So in high school, this is Joanna Spring, now Townsend. Um she had her students make public service announcements. So they learn about the assets of being bilingual. And this particular pair of students, um or I think there are three young ladies, did a s- uh role play with um interviewing people for jobs. So they go through their role play and I can't find this little thing. So they interview and then one of the candidates is bilingual. And then she calls her and she offers her the job. Well, here's, and here she's, I think she's mulling over what to do, so I'll just start here. The end of the video. Sorry. Oh, that's it. Thank you.
The ability to speak a foreign language is important in any industry that involves the transfer of goods or services across international borders. Do you know that being bilingual makes you better at things? Also, being bilingual makes you have a better memory.
Oh, something happened. Anyway, I hope that you can um understand the basics. Um so our students are learning um to support their social emotional needs and also to build a site with evidence. Our students in the high school um produce PSAs. We might need a little bit of support from the, from the video department on how to make, how to have the sound in and not be too loud. But it was really, um, a great project. And in kindergarten, totally other end of the spectrum, the students, um, learned about being bilingual and how it's a superpower. So we have, being bilingual is my superpower because I can teach, teacher, how to speak Spanish. And the other student said, being bilingual is my superpower because I can help my grownups. So it's something that the students all launch the year with. And they learn poetry and they, they read in other languages and, um, also do their, you know, common core standards and cite with evidence. But it's really a great way for them to start the year. Here's a look at our numbers. So in mid-October, we were at 131 at NES. There's a star next to that figure because we are now including a pre-K, pre-K numbers. The state wants us to code pre-K if they are indeed L. So Melanie, who was on the previous, um, screen, who's our bilingual support specialist, is now helping us screen, um, our students. We'll talk about that a little bit more later. So they're screened, but we do not have to give them full ESL services. That said, um, we should be consulting with them, consulting with the teachers. And we do it, but very sparsely. As you can see, our numbers are really high and we have three teachers at NES. And, um, with a fourth teacher, we would be able to do that a little bit better. Our numbers overall are 271. So, you know, they, they dipped in 2018 a tiny bit and now they're creeping back up again in 2019. I included the last column, FELD, means, um, former English learners. And it's because they exited from the program as of this September. So our ESL teachers did such a great job that they reached that magic number to be able to exit from ESL. But they're still acquiring language. Actually, all of us in this room are still acquiring language because we're all learning new words all the time. Our English learners are still acquiring more, however. So if we added those numbers back in there, we would see, um, that we, we do have a lot of English language learners. The population is growing. They're exiting from ESL, but they remain in our system as an asset to our community. We have a 589 increase this year from way back in 2005. So we're staying steady, you know, hovering in the upper 200s. Um, I just thought it was worth taking a look at NES. It's where our largest concentration of English language learners is. Pre-K, we have 23. Honestly, that number could have changed. I mean, we get, um, Sarah, or Sarah, she's not here, but Sarah's mom's here. We get, um, she's our central registrar. We get emails all the time that English learners are coming into pre-K and K and 1, once a week. Kim Kubich and/or Kim Albertson send out an email welcoming a new student. But ESL is only delivered in grades K to 2, so that's important to know. Thirty-four percent of our students are multilingual. So they're students who have a second language at home, but many of them have exited. So they're called FELDs, former English learners. And/or, um, some of our students grew up bilingual and never became English language learners. At the beginning of the year, at, at the end, when, um, after NES does their, um, pre-K registration, we screen kids and then we screen them through, um, well, as they come. And we have a lot of bilingual students who also don't qualify for ESL. But we do monitor them. Because sometimes on the kindergarten screener, it's pretty, pretty basic English. So they might know the basic words for apple tree, car, go, eat. And then in first grade, we might notice that they're lagging behind their peers and that that extra dose of ESL would be really helpful. Duly identified means that they, um, are English language learners with special needs. And that's at around 12%, which is lower than our number of students who, compared to the whole population, who are, um, who are, uh, special ed. So that's good because we don't want our duly identified numbers to be higher than our monolingual students with special needs. Here, the colors are slightly different. This represents the home languages of our students. So English is spoken by 66% of our total student body. Other languages, 34. On the other slide, it was 36. Honestly, I think that that number changed in the two days that I made two different slides because we get more kids identified. Spanish is our largest population of English language learners, followed by Portuguese. Huge difference. And Bulgarian, and as you can see, we have a little bit of everything. We have a really diverse community. New this year, we have a student who speaks Haitian Creole, so that's exciting. We also now are screening our kids who, um, come to us from Jamaica and who list Jamaican Creole as a home language. So that's new this year. When we had our coordinated program review, um, from the state, they said that we need to start screening those students as well. Country of origin, um, 53% of our English language learners are born in the United States, so they're American. And the next largest population is 21% of our English learners are from El Salvador, followed by Dominican Republic at 9%. Brazil, 6. And then the numbers dip after Guatemala. English learners, uh, take the MCAS. And they also take another test, ACCESS, which I have shared with the school committee in the past. It's a task that takes, um, it's four parts. They have a listening, speaking, reading and writing section to their test. They, um, could be tested in any one of those four domains in any subject. So they could be tested in speaking with a science prompt and writing with, um, with a ELA or social studies prompt. So it's not how we kind of see traditional testing. And they're really testing, um, to see the students' linguistic, um, development at the vocabulary level. And then more importantly, at the whole text level. How much text can they read or can they output in a cohesive manner? Can they speak in multiple paragraphs with a through line that makes sense? And then the sentence level, are they using complex sentences or lots of short, simple sentences with a repetitive pattern? So that's pretty much how their language is analyzed in these four domains. For accountability, our English learner and former English lan, language learner data are combined. So the state looks at them that way. They also will pull out English learners. But in a lot of our grades, we don't have enough to have, um, a substantial count that'll show up in our accountability. Ls and FELDs score points in accountability for ACCESS and MCAS. So I'll share some of that with you. On the ACCESS test, um, 61% of our students made progress in 2019. So that's up from 57%. So it's always great to go up. Also knowing that, um, the access, the making progress data only refers to students who have two years' worth of data. So the newcomers don't get a making progress number because they have to compare last year's score to this year's score. So you can take a look at our numbers. We don't have the state figure yet. I'm suspecting that I'll get that when I go to a state meeting on the 14th. They usually release it there to L directors and then it shows up, um, elsewhere. We have our made access, uh, made progress by grade. You know, it's interesting to look at. It, it's not, um, fixed because all of our kids don't just come in at K and then make their way up. So with any one of these grade points, there could have been a whole bunch of newcomers, for example, or kids who have only been here two years. But we can see, you know, jumping out at us as grade two, 90, 98% of the kids made progress. As I said, in kindergarten, we screen them. Some of our kids, a lot of our kids come in high at kindergarten. So they're bilingual at home. They come in with a lot of English. They score just below the cutoff point and they're out by grade two. Um, we see another jump in grade four and that follows the, um, average trajectory for English language learners, five to six years to reach attainment. This number, I think, is exciting. We, we exited more students last year. The district number increased by five and a half percent. But if we look at the individual schools, I think there's six, like successes to note. In the high school, we, 6, 6% more kids exited the program. And those kids had kind of been stuck in there for a while. They were like six, seven and eight years. And, um, thanks to Jessica Spring Townsend, now she got married. Um, I think we're able to really exit some kids who were kind of just hovering around the cutoff, um, score. She really helped us with that. We also noticed NES, we exited a whole bunch of kids there. So that was new. We actually did just, they just, they're, they're out of the program. Well, of course, monitor them. So that was, I think, a huge success. Other access points to consider, um, 35% of our opt-outs made progress. So that's not a great number. Opt-outs are students who are English learners and their parents decide that they do not want them in the ESL classes. So it's for various reasons. But only 35% of them made progress. While 41% of our kids with special needs who are English learners made progress. 25% of our Ls with the 540 made progress. So when we have opt-out meetings, um, I do share the students', um, data with the parents. I explain to them that in ESL class, we do really focus on language within the content and language for meaning. We also explain that even when a student opts out, they still have to take access. So sometimes it's, it's just great for them to be able to be in ESL to get practice because like the speaking test is, is weird, right? We don't give our kids oral tests in the United States. Other countries you do. Like you could sit in oral exam in history class if you went to high school in France. We don't give oral exams. So it's good for our kids to be in ESL so that they have experience with the types of tasks that they're asked to take in order to exit being an L. So this is our MCAS data. So I'm just showing the accountability data. So this is for, um, English learners and former English learners. They did really well at NIS on ELA achievement, math achievement, and science achievement, not so, not so much. Um, but we are working on that and building some ESL language of science units. English language arts growth, math growth, um, they did wonderfully. And English language proficiency refers to their growth on the ACCESS score. So the school got four points there from the students performing so on, on access as well. Chronic absenteeism is an issue. So we did share, Jocelyn and I, um, and Melanie, and actually Eileen was there too at our first meeting this year, um, for the English learner parent advisory council. We shared this data and we've been having some serious conversations about chronic absenteeism and what it means when our kids are absent from school. CPS achievement, same thing. Our Ls and FELDs are doing a good job. So if we think about, um, accountability and points that their schools get awarded, our English learners are indeed adding to the gaining of points. So that's really good news. Our parents were excited to see this as well. CPS did well in all areas except for chronic absenteeism. So, um, we did talk to our parents about that and we are working with our, um, parent advisory council, getting the word out about what it means to be absent. Eileen Taverdes has shared on Facebook a lot of information. So we're trying to just get the word out that being absent really is detrimental to their students' learning and it's also detrimental to our school's accountability. The high school, um, data look, um, a little bit different because they only have MCAS in one grade. And we don't have enough Ls and FELDs to get, um, their own little category. So the only way I could kind of show you was just to kind of globalize and look at our Hispanic Latino data. Of course, that doesn't take into account all of our English language learners because some are not Hispanic or Latino. But it's the only way we can look at this data. Unless I pulled out the seven kids who actually took ELA, the eight kids who actually took math and then, um, a few more who took science. But they did well in the high school as well. And with absenteeism, um, two out of four points. And they, but this was an improvement but below target, so that was also like a small success for our Hispanic and Latino population. So another topic I'll touch on briefly is that, um, this, the Nantucket English Language Learner Program has been, um, in what we used to call coordinated program review. Now we call it tiered focused monitoring. And it's when the state monitors the compliance aspect of our programming. And, um, that started when I first got here in 2017 and I had to write a self-study report. And that's like a huge report. Now you upload everything up into a, uh, database. But in the olden days, we used to literally submit binders and the binders were ginormous binders. So they asked for all kinds of reports and proof of, um, records and intake forms from when we screened them and, and so I'd have to go back, you know, randomly. And I had to check every single folder and say how many folders had home language surveys, for example. So they're checking the federal, um, guidelines and processes that we're supposed to use to identify students. So it was this huge, long, not very exciting, um, task. So then uploaded it all to the state. And then they came back to us this past May with a draft report. And they had a few, um, questions or like citing, citations. And, um, then I responded to those. Some of them were just kind of misinformation. We just had to clarify with them. Some of them, um, I documented that we'd already fixed that because we'd had a whole, you know, we'd had a lot of time to work on these systems that we're building. So then in August 2019, we got our final report with just two findings. And they had to do with, um, improvement needed to promote and support the rapid English language acquisition and improvements to monitoring. So it was kind of very vague because they tell us we need, um, improvements to our program. But then when we look at our data, we can see that we're, we're doing, I mean, of course, there's always room for improvement, but we're doing pretty well. We beat the state numbers at least in our. So it was kind of a little bit, um, in some ways, not very specific for us to act on. That said, um, they did ask us to work on our screening of new arrivals. Not have an ESL teacher screen kids, but have our ESL teachers focused on teaching and learning, which we did remedy by hiring Melanie Mendez, who is now screening our kids for us, for example. They also did question the number of, um, teachers at NES because the ratios are very different than the other schools. They asked us to have to submit a report in, in December. They were looking at our monitoring of FELDs and our English language learners. So we knew we have to monitor students who don't make progress on the ACCESS test. We know what their scores are, are. We have to show that we're monitoring and putting like mini goals and improvement plans in. And the last thing that they did, um, find was they, um, found that not every school allowed time for ESL teachers and core content teachers to meet and to collaborate. So that's where they asked us to work out our improvements. And then I have to report on December 6th and they read and I submit evidence of what we're doing and then they'll get back to us in like nine or 10 weeks and then see where we are. New in 2019. Um, so we have the additional bilingual support specialist and it's really great. She's screening new kids as they come in. And she's also beginning to screen for SLIF. So to screen for our students who may have limited or interrupted former, formal education. And she's also beginning to give, um, literacy tests to our students. Ideally, this would all happen at intake, but it doesn't necessarily happen at intake. But we still think that the literacy, the reading skills in Spanish at least, it comes in handy that she went to school to be a teacher and she wants to be a teacher, that we can at least give some of that information to our teachers who are really trying to figure out how much literacy our kids have in their home language. Because we know that that transfers. We, the LPAC is busy working. We're developing bylaws and creating goals. Of the summer, we created five new ESL units, which was great to work with the teachers on that. They did a really lovely job. They were just, um, approved. We had a culturally relevant PD with Boston University. It was three days this past weekend. It was Friday, um, after school and then Saturday all day. It was a previous, um, Saturday part of that. And then today, we had a professional development with, um, the ESL team, with counselors, therapists, special ed personnel. The community school was there. And we had invited some outside providers as well. And it was really great. And it was teaching to strength. And, um, teaching students who, um, who have exposure to chronic stress, trauma and violence and really using an asset-based approach to get to know our students and working off assets to provide them with a safe environment and to get the best out of them. So that was exciting today. We went to the National WIDA Conference. WIDA is the group that makes our ACCESS test and does a lot of PD. It happened to be in Providence, um, a few weeks ago in October. So we were fortunate to bring two teachers from CPS and two teachers from NIS this year. So that was super exciting. We have round two of ESL classes starting at the, at the community school. So we are one of those groups that's offering classes for free. So we are one of those groups that's offering classes for free. Whereas they're competing with themselves because they're helping us out. So basically, the LPAC had asked for classes during the day because a lot of the moms have small children, so they're unable to leave the house at night. And through Title III, we're asked to support family engagement of our English learner parents. And in trying to grow this Parent Advisory Council, we really want to gain the trust of our families. So when they ask for something and they're serious, we try to deliver if we can, if it's within what we're able to do. So thank God we have the community school because last year they set it up and they ran the whole program and I just literally wrote the PO. It was really great. And they're doing this again this year with us. So that's really wonderful. And we also have something new with the community school. We surveyed our LPAC and they have, maybe there'll be a different presentation, but they have different things that they're interested in. They're interested in programming-wise, they would like to see some after-school programming for the kids for homework help. They also would like to see a dual-language exploration committee. And then we also asked them, like, what would you like to learn about with the schools? And they say they would like to learn how to help their children with their homework, how to read to their children at home, like what should they be doing with them? And then there are a bunch of other sprinklings of what they're also interested in. So to respond to the reading to my child, I met with Pauline Cronin and with Brian and we're going, we're looking into starting like, it might just be like a three-day workshop in the winter where the moms will come with their children and will read with them and also have books to give them to take in their home language. Thank you. That was it. That snuck up on me. Any questions?
Thank you, Kelly.
So how much of the absenteeism is part of them pulling the kids out and moving or doing something like that? Is it real absenteeism or is it, is it blown up because it's an extended period of being out of school?
I think with the admin team, we took a look at, the different principals looked at their numbers and they found that English learner parents and English-only parents have the same propensity toward extended vacations. So it wasn't just our English learners who are doing that, but they are. We also know a lot of our families have to go off island to go to their lawyers. And we also know that with our middle school and high school students, they're often the interpreters for the family. So there's that. That said, we also know that when it's rainy, sometimes families don't come to school. So Jocelyn's on to those families now and she'll literally call them up in the morning and be like, you know, I noticed so-and-so's not here. So we're working on those pieces of it that we kind of can kind of inform people. And then some of the reasons why they're absent are valid because the whole family will go off and take care of some business to make sure they can stay here and be safe.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Well, we've been asked to, so I'm just abiding by the law. Thank you. This is, I mean, it's amazing. Every time you present and we hear this information, it to me is just amazing how you're doing and your team is doing all of what we're required to do and also what our district needs.
Thank you.
So thank you. Congratulations. I was in the elementary school a couple of weeks ago and it was lovely because I happened to be around Nicole Ridge's classroom and a EL student came out of the classroom and just beautifully, she just rolled into Spanish and helped him with his needs and they had this wonderful conversation in Spanish. And then he very happily seemed to go off back into the classroom. But I think we've come a long way from when we saw our district beginning to change and we weren't ready and we had a lot of uncomfortable awkward moments because we weren't able to converse in the language that they were most comfortable with. So that really warmed my heart.
Thank you.
Looking at this number, you answered a lot of the questions I had. But I mean, we believe to look at this, in fifteen years, we've grown 589% of our English learners. That just is phenomenal. I wasn't quite sure when you said ESL delivered in only grades K through 2.
And yes, sorry. It was just that slide because there are pre-K numbers in my chart that don't show up like in Martin's Budget Chart because it's funded differently and the overall numbers look different. But in our department, we're counting the pre-K students because they are counted in our Title III funding.
Okay.
And with Title III, that's now tied to Title I, we're required to screen them and identify them as English learners.
Okay, thank you.
No, that's a good question.
Again, sixteen languages spoken by our students. I don't know how we compare to the state, but I'd think that we're probably one of the highest number of.
There are some districts where it's up to like around fifty. But we do, for a small place, we do, people are, you know, remarkable that we have Tagalog, Nepali. We have another student who speaks some Telet. He just came in that I hadn't heard of before.
I know. I saw that Tagalog and I had to look it up. Is the 540 plan similar to like an IEP or 504?
504.
Oh, it was just a typo. All right. I thought it maybe was a different form that we use.
No, it was a 504.
I was gonna learn something. Okay. And I don't know if we can just ask you while you're here, but I'd love to, maybe after the questions, could we ask for just an update on the LaSalle program? Because I know we've got students.
That is part of the department. So it's continuing. We have one student who now is at LaSalle and she's on the scholarship. And she's super exciting, excited and exciting. We had a conference call with high school guidance counselors and with Jocelyn and with Dr. Claudia Rinaldi. And the surprise guest was the student and that was, she was so thrilled to be there. And so we are continuing with that program right now. Guidance and Jocelyn are working together to recruit students. So far, we have four. So now we've asked the counselors to identify like five kids each and then Jocelyn can also badger them because sometimes the announcements are made and they say that they'll come and then, you know, they have a test to make up and they don't come to the meeting. So we're just gonna kind of do triple-duty wraparound to make sure that we get, I'm hoping for ten to fifteen students to go on December 4th to the visit to LaSalle and then to take the one-credit class. And that class is with Dr. Rinaldi. She kind of zooms in and gives the class to the students, which is really exciting. So that's continuing.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it's good news.
It's a good way for us to, as we talk about in knowing a goal to diversify our staff, our educators by offering free four-year college undergraduate in education is phenomenal.
It is. It is. And that's part of the conversation is letting our students know that because you study education doesn't mean that you necessarily have to be a teacher. So Claudia's talk was about how guidance counselors have to get a master's degree. So you need to get a bachelor's degree in something and it's great to understand schooling. And/or groups like Eagle Maritime have educators on staff. So if you love the ocean and education, like you could have a job like that. Doesn't necessarily mean that you're in a public school. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
What they said.
What they said.
Thank you.
No, no, Kelly, you're not done. Joel?
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
She's ready to run off the stage. Joel, you're all set? I have a question.
Okay.
I'm really excited to learn more and I'm glad that your LPAC committee is starting to talk about the dual-language classroom opportunities because I just think that would be an amazing opportunity for our students, our families, and that's something that I really hope we can pursue sooner rather than later. So can you keep us updated on that?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to committee discussions and votes to take. We have a vote to approve policy EEBA, which you guys received in your packet for school-owned vehicles.
Move through.
A second.
Vote in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve donation from Matt and Caitlin Aresman, a tricycle bike to Nantucket High School Physical Education Department in the amount of $500.
Move to approve.
Vote in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve donation from Friends of Nantucket Public Schools to NIS Activities Fund for Music, Meet the Orchestra in the amount of $500.
So moved.
Vote in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve donation from Educate Incorporated for CPS Account Reconciliation in the amount of $720.29.
Second.
Vote in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve donation from St. Paul's Church to NES for school supplies in the amount of $1,164.51.
Second.
Vote in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve October 1st, 2019, meeting minutes?
Uh, move. Motion to move.
Second. Vote in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve October 8th, 2019, workshop meeting minutes?
So moved. Thank you for giving me this big chance.
Vote in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve October 15th, 2019, workshop meeting minutes?
Move through.
Second.
Vote in favor?
Aye.
And a vote to approve transfers and invoices?
Move through.
Second.
Vote in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent's report enrollment update?
So you have the month of November in your packet. You'll see that there are 1,685 students in our school district. That is down three from the October 1st count. I think the numbers speak for themselves. And I don't know if you have any particular questions. I'd be happy to entertain them.
Any questions? Comments?
Do we have a sense on how our staff are handling the size of the classrooms and also the moving around the hallways and the stress on the buildings? I mean, I think it's, is that something that we're hearing from our staff about?
I think we always hear that. You know, the numbers are, I mean, our numbers are fairly comfortable in NES with what, 16 to 18 in kindergarten? But would they like 12 to 15? Sure. Likewise, in any of the grades that you go through. But our K through probably four are pretty good. The fifth grade is starting to inch up there and of course, sixth grade, we've talked about. You know, freshman class of 142, so the high school is pretty jam-packed. I think Diane O'Neill and I have already talked about, you know, do we need to look into a portable classroom? Possibly for the middle school. That's something that we're looking at. And as you know, we're doing the campus-wide study, which is incorporating, you know, where a new school would go if the numbers continue to rise. So we respond to the numbers. I think, if I could just add, I think sometimes we get caught up in talking about the numbers and it is important, but I think it's the needs of the children that have grown so much. And so while I see the numbers, whether they're more or less, doesn't, doesn't strike me as much as the needs of the children that I see coming into our schools that are greater than ever.
Can you expand on that?
Social, emotional, mental health concerns. You know, if you look at our free and reduced numbers and how they've gone in ten years that I've been here from fourteen to over thirty percent. And it's poverty that dictates oftentimes the needs of children. And so, you know, not, there's not always that one-to-one correlation, but I think the research clearly shows that students living in poverty have more challenges. And whether that is the simple thing of putting food on the table or a roof over their heads. But that also translates into helping them with mental health or social, emotional issues. So I'm, I don't think it's anything new. The school committee has heard this from me before. But I think if you talk to every one of our principals and department heads, they would say that we're seeing more children in crisis coming into our schools than we ever have before.
Thank you.
I think it's interesting though, the numbers do tell a story. And I think, you know, just the students passing through the hall hearing or having difficulties getting to lockers because there are so many students. So I think many of our students choose to carry their load around with them for the day. And maybe Joel can speak to that. Is it challenging?
I think it has a lot to do with only having three minutes to get between classes. And the classes I'm in, no one's packing up until the bell. You want to get every second of time out of there.
That's good to hear.
By the time the bell rings and you pack up your stuff and if you're on the second floor, I go from chemistry and I run down to Senora Hickson's class, I'm barely getting there in time. And furthermore, I feel like, at least for me, I can manage a lot of my stuff in my backpack. It also helps you from hoarding too much clutter, like if you're keeping work from.
Good point.
But this is an offensive lineman.
Right.
He can carry, he can carry any load that he's given.
And you think of our CPS students with, you know, our sixth grade class, as large as it is, seventh grade, I just, it's challenging for those kids to get to their lockers with that many students passing through the halls, so.
We're out of space.
We are. We are.
I mean, it is what it is and the thing is, what do we, what do we do about it?
Well, we are, we are planning for it and that's the campus-wide study. And we've had several conversations with the architects. And I think I've said before, but happy to say it again, before we can determine where we want to put fields and other things in this district, we have to decide where the next school's going to go. And once that is decided, we can move forward with, okay, what will that school be? And what will it look like? And there probably will be several schools of thought on that, but we need to start honing in on that now. Fortunately, we have a little bit of respite. This is the first year that our numbers have gone down from last year to this year or maybe stayed the same. I think it's within two students from October to October. That's, that's a good thing because if we continue to have the fifty, the additional fifty a year, then we are behind in developing the school, so.
Going back to the community school, just for a quick second, you know, I think we should think about, and maybe you already have, is that we need a public pool somewhere other than the school. I mean, to me, that seems pretty obvious. If we're having issues with, you know, furnishing it for our students and then having the adults be able to use the pool at the same time. I'm sure we've had that thought, but I'm putting it in the atmosphere.
Thank you. District Improvement Plan?
Okay, I'm going to share with you a good amount of work, blood, sweat, and tears that the administrative team and leadership team have been working on really since the summer. So we present to you a draft District Improvement Plan. I've got some here to extras if you need them. It looks a little bit different than what you remember from the strategic plan. District Improvement Plan and Strategic Plan can be interchanged in some cases. And most districts in the Commonwealth are headed in a District Improvement Plan cycle. And they usually keep it within three years, sometimes a little bit longer. But three years is a good manageable amount of time to focus on goals and feel that the work can actually be completed. So we came together with the administrative team and we looked at some information that Mr. Cozard had collected with something called, with something called SWOTS, S-W-O-T-S, which is basically strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And so the principals and the program directors completed their SWOTS, which was a collection of information. And we came together and disaggregated that information. And in the process of doing that, we came up with four focus. And in the, in the process of doing that, we came up with four focus areas. And you'll see that as you, as we go through, there are four strategic objectives. And, and basically, those are the areas and really the goals and areas of concentration that we are planning to, to, to do our work. And so I'm not going to go through the whole document. I think this is probably worthy of maybe a workshop. But the administrative team put a lot of work into it with the leadership team and they have now, they have this and are rolling it out to their faculty and staff and school councils. And we hope to have some feedback and possibly some added value from staff members. So, so we look forward to being able to share with you in more detail once we have more to, to share. So that's all for now.
Thank you. Any questions or comments further? Great, we'll take this home.
Just want you to know, I appreciate the staple being in the correct corner.
That's okay.
It's a rare treat.
All right. All right, thank you. Subcommittee work? Any subcommittee work to report on? No? Okay. Joel?
I'd just like to take the time, thank the community for, uh, what an awesome outcome we had with Island Cup. It was a really fun experience, I think, for everyone. We had, I believe, five football games. We had two youth flag football games, the middle school, the JV, and the Varsity. And we went four and one on the day, so that was pretty nice. Yeah, it's just really cool to see the whole island get behind the football program. Everyone gets on the boat, all the fans come over. I didn't hear of any trouble, anyone, any fights or anything, which is, this has happened in the past, so that was nice to see. And I wanted to thank the athletic department for putting all that together, chartering the boat and such.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And I, I'm looking for you to mention the, the match with Mashpee, a team that annihilated us early in the season and then what happened recently?
Um, yes, that was pretty cool. That's an 80-point swing. They scored 38 on us earlier in the season and then we just beat them 42 to nothing.
It's incredible.
That's just, we were missing some players early in the season and working our tails off, going really hard in practice. It's really competitive. It gets tempered a player at times, but I think that competitiveness has driven us to the level we're at. We're on the glass.
And if I can add, the boys soccer team tonight played the number one seed and they were behind two to nothing with five minutes to go, tied the game up and won it in overtime.
Wow, that's incredible.
Congratulations to them as well. That was pretty remarkable.
And even though girls soccer lost, they, I think they went to penalty kick, so that, that was an awesome way to go out even though they lost.
Well, thank you very much. Agenda for the next meeting?
So if I can just jump in, I, I do have a draft of the budget calendar. So you see that on the agenda for next meeting, but I thought I would give you a draft.
Oh, that's great.
Because I've just gotten that information from the...
Thank you.
And so we'll, we'll be able to add some value to that. We, I think that one thing you might want to consider as you're looking at the horizon, I, I think you're going to want three meetings in December because in the past, the budget has, I think you felt it, it was, it was a little heavy at the last budget meeting with the four schools and the community school at the same time. So I, I think if you can look at that and sort of plan December 3rd, December 10th, and December 17th, as you're looking, looking forward. But for next meeting, Martin will present the preliminary budget forecast and I'll share with you the federal grants, graphs, the budget calendar. Martin will also do a first-quarter budget update and then we'll have a report on the NCTM Regional Conference Report and the town energy person will be here. And we'll see if with, if Beth and any school committee members want to report on the mass, mask conference. I have, at your request, I, I think, put on the different goals on the horizon so that you could see which things you are tackling.
And on the agenda. I love it.
Yep, and, and on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we, we have a lot to do in the next two months in terms of, of budgeting and planning and presenting, but we'll be ready.
Yes.
Mike, may I?
Pauline, hold on one second.
Not that we're not going to have the meeting, but I won't be in attendance on the 3rd because I'm attending an innovative pathways meeting the next morning and I think we have to stay overnight, right?
You're gonna miss the food service update, enrollment, and music competition.
Just, just so you know.
All right. Thank you. Steve?
Mike, my eyes deceiving me. Where are the individual schools?
The, for the budget? Yeah. Are you talking about? That report, if you look on the, um, the budget calendar? You will see December 3rd, December 10th, and December 17th. December 3rd will be athletics, facilities, technology, and central. On the 10th, I'm suggesting that you might want to split up community school, NES, NIS, and then the 17th CPS and NHS. In the past, we've had all four schools at the same meeting.
Listen, I apologize if necessary, but these say school council.
Flip over the bat.
If you're looking at the, yeah, you're on the, on the other side. We do have the, the date of April 4th, which is a Saturday. I guess they're going back to a Saturday town meeting. And right now, we've been given the date of Monday, January 13th for the presentation, the FinCom. But I'm not sure if we want to have that before or after our school budget hearing. So I have to have a conversation with Martin and the town on that. So there may be a, a few changes here to this.
Thank you. Just needs to change on the horizon because you've got community score on the 3rd of December, but on the other, it's on the 10th.
There are adjustments coming.
All right, thank you. May, any other questions, comments? All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second.
Vote in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.